We have a trail down our backyard. She said, "That's a stream." We'll let the dog down.
Can you just turn it off?
Just like, hit up here?
Um, so here, take this out. That's the power, that's the camera stopper cord, don't press it now.
Well, I wasn't gonna do that.
Yeah, so that's to turn the record off. Um, just hit, just hit that stop button right there.
Okay.
When it's done.
Okay.
And then just power it off.
Okay.
Just stop, power off.
And then power off the back?
Yeah, I would hit the stopper cord and then power off, um, right here.
Yeah.
To the middle position.
Okay.
Yep, and then, um, yeah, I would just leave that on and then hopefully I could come check it out.
Alright, wonderful.
I keep telling myself that. Okay, okay. Are we, are we, uh, ready? To start? Hey, welcome to the regular meeting of the Bepel Planning Board. Today is Wednesday, June 28th. Uh, the meeting is scheduled to go from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock. You're making fun of me, Dave.
No, no.
And if we go beyond 8:00 o'clock, we do have to take a vote, so it's not a guarantee. So we have, we have our work cut out for us tonight. Uh, with that in mind, we have four items on the agenda to consider this evening. We have a subdivision amendment, a determination of applicability, and two site plan applications. Uh, before we proceed, I'd like to remind everyone that all questions need to go through the chair. Okay. I'm going to declare a quorum. Uh, now down to minutes, because everyone had an opportunity to review our meeting minutes.
Did we do the site walk in there too?
Oh, I did not, because I was in a very short time.
That's fine. I know.
I had to get back to the next meeting.
I was scared to even ask.
Yeah.
Um, they'll be in our place tomorrow. Um, would someone like to, uh, make a motion on the minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as written.
Do I have a second?
Yep.
On favor? Great. Uh, communication, we've got one, uh, we have a couple of site plans to sign. We're gonna take a, take 10 minutes and do that right now. So there are the...
These are for the Rusty Lantern, they fixed the spelling.
Did you check?
I did not, because I just dropped it.
You can chart them out.
I do not have a lot. I should have brought the ones that I have. I have mine.
Oh, that's great.
Excuse me, can I question the board? Can, is there any chance that I can go in front of all the new business? Since, I mean, we've already done our site block, we've already done the planning board, we've already done the application. I just wanted to see if there's any way.
Well, I mean, Courtney ordered these as she did John, because we've got the first two things that just...
So I gotta sit through two hours of this, or an hour of this before I can get to mine?
No, it's minutes.
Okay.
It's minutes, it's really, we don't have, that's how you put, so they don't have to sit through you guys signing.
And if anybody would like a copy, they did send me copies, they want to sign it, they didn't want that to happen?
I don't know what, maybe I'm losing my mind.
They will be coming back, is that where your...
Yes, they want to sign you.
Uh, well, so Rusty Lantern, this is the first plan that you, that was approved.
Okay.
Um, they do have to come back, I don't know if the whole board is aware, they will be back in a month, because they have to move where their tanks were located, which inferes that was where their dumpster was located. So, you will be seeing them again.
And we will be signing something again?
You'll have to approve its full site plan amendment, yes.
Laurie hasn't signed it.
So, they're just, this is just the original plan, so they can at least start getting everything lined up. So they approved that we bent into the planning board and it's been approved, and then they can start.
It's going this way? Yeah, well, one's going one way and one the other. Did you sign this one? Yes.
Um, eventually, it's not gonna be like West Paris, because West Paris did the knockdown, because I guess some of the accepted ones, they could still, well, they couldn't it. So this one, uh, are you familiar with the lot? So the old house, uh, is where the building is gonna be. So they'll knock down the old house, he's, uh, built the new one, and then knock down the old one. So it'll only be closed...
I think they said three to five weeks?
No, the people that worked there told me they were going to actually build the other one and then knock it down.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
Was it here or was it...
Here, West Paris was already knocked down, unfortunately.
Are they, are they gonna have some type of traffic control for that? When the truck effect coming in, matter on that corner?
For Rusty Lantern.
It'd be pretty tough right there, we've had two depths in that corner right there. Truck through in and out of there, or is... Yeah, I mean, that's something considered, especially when they start carrying and bringing dump trucks in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
That good, alright. So the next item on our agenda is determination of applicability for the rec department to use the Epple Bisbee School, uh, property for some, set up some athletic fields. Do you want to...
We did it last year, and it was brought to our attention that soccer goals, the disc golf, the GOGA pit, and the volleyball net are considered temporary structures in the ordinances. So we would like to do what we did last year, use, use the lot to put those pieces in. It's walking distance from the school for MKA to use it for, from the school in session for them to use it. So we'd like to utilize the lot while other committees determine what to do at this stage. Um, I've already asked for permission, you, for applicability for the ice rink, and that was... So now I'm back again for the summer activities, so...
I know. And on the ice rink, Mary, what did we, we determine that you have to set plan?
Didn't we last year determine that they didn't have to come before the...
No, and I thought it was gonna be more of a, but it's new equipment. It's not permanent, right? Being, no concrete pads being poured or anything.
No, it's just seasonal, so I don't know if it seems, I don't know if it's permanent. Seasonal athletics, temporary equipment.
Right. So this is a temporary structure. I think structure is even stronger.
Okay, so why, I wouldn't see this, in my opinion, as something that needs to have site plan, because it's temporary, it's like the...
It's always nice to see you, Mary.
But someone has to do a vote.
But we do need a vote, so...
I'll make a motion that the application, or the applicant does not need to go through site plan, because this is not a permanent structure.
Second.
On favor? Thanks, Mary.
So, do I have to kind of like, if, I don't know what the, like, if we decide to put, I don't know, um...
Like another...
Like a building?
Like, well, that would be something I would see that I would need to come here for. If we were gonna put a temporary building there for the ice rink equipment, if we choose not to ice rink again. Um, and we would need a building to put the stuff in, um, because it just doesn't make sense to throw it back to the floor.
Well, I think the, the, the whole project's in flux, there's a committee working on the use of that. I think the stuff you're gonna do this year and into next winter is all gonna be temporary. I don't see, unless you have a permanent kind of a structure, or you have warm concrete or something like that, I don't think you need to come to us. But that's...
So, so is it, so what you just approved, is it listed for the, like, the GOGA pit and the soccer goals and...
Yeah, it's a seasonal sport.
Okay, so seasonal sport, so that'll cover if, if the board wants to bring the rec board...
The GOGA pit?
It's a, it's a octagonal, um, fenced-in area. Um, and it's a kind of a game cross between forest square and dodgeball.
Oh, fine.
And adults and children like to play it, and it's great, we have the kids, they're always on the move and stuff, so...
So you're gonna have a fenced-in area?
It's a, it's a pen, it's already been made, we, we left it...
It's like a big playpen.
We had it there last year.
It's on the ground.
Yeah, it does...
The fencing's not needed for that?
No, it's not, it's a, it's seven, seven panel side. It was there last year, we took it apart and put it in storage at, um, Public Works. It's now, we put it together, it's up at Crescent Park. We'd like to move it to a public space, because when MKA is there, a public can't use the, obviously.
I didn't know that was the official name, that's why I just called it a little structure. A little pin or whatever.
It's a very popular game, so you look around and you see this one.
All the summer stuff is gonna sit outside, with the exception of a little thing doing a suck back.
Summer stuff, yeah, and I, it's, it's the old gold, I found them upstairs in Logan Hall. I don't know, they might have been from the 1970s, and I found them in that, and put those up last year, and people used it, and GOGA pit, disc golf, nice use of the space.
Yeah, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we're doing, we're doing what you do.
They're just starting to arrive right there across from High School.
Next, we have a subdivision amendment, where we're gonna take, uh, Lot 4, Paradise Ridge subdivision, and add land that's not within Paradise Ridge subdivision to Lot 4. Are you, Mr. Farrar?
I am.
Could you, could you give us a little overview of what you're...
My name's Ken Vaughn, license severe, and, you know, the happy fellow, and general pro. They purchased Lot 4 in Paradise Ridge subdivision, and had an existing cutting line. They also purchased a budding lot. They purchased a budding lot, um, from, I mean, the block, yeah. And they want to put the foundation on, to the existing home. You guys can see, uh, the risk that ambition's going to be, Lot subdivision, subdivision one, subdivision lot one. So they would like to add, probably, that they thought, running on the part, um, to Lot 4, Paradise Ridge subdivision, to accommodate any setback issues.
So that...
Do you want to go up to standing first, before you...
Yeah. Can I get a motion on standing?
Any motion at standing.
Could I get a second?
A second, please.
On favor? Um, I'm trying to get...
So the, the, the new lot is not part of the regular subdivision, correct?
Well, the, the lot that's being added is not part of subdivision, yes, correct?
This is subdivision, then?
So, yeah.
It needs to be...
Right, that's what it is. It's an amendment to the subdivision, so, um, it'll be all one lot. So there's more land beyond this that the Donna co-owns, the trust?
Yes, correct. One or three acres, and has an assessment home on it.
So this is just going to be used as, uh... It's weird, because it looks like, is some of their property already over the line?
No, that's why the son, I don't know what it had.
Whoa, proposed, because I'm... I need the magnifying glass, I know this stuff.
This is the original subdivision, no, I'm...
Oh, okay, alright.
So I have a question up there, is it, have they been doing like, almost some clear cutting up in there? Just really taking everything out, do you know?
Uh, they've done some harvesting since they purchased the club in 2021.
On the Vernon Street?
They did a lot of harvesting over there.
Behind the, behind the existing building.
So Vernon Street.
I know there's been some drainage problems down below. I know one person actually had someone had asked him if they could clear the land there, or clear, cut his trees, and he said, "No," because his basement was always wet, and this, the trees growing back was helping it not to run in there. So I just hope they're thinking about, you know, the downhill side, what the water is doing, running downhill. I mean, there are all these trees in that...
So just for clarification, this piece that they wanna add to this piece came out of that piece?
Uh, originally, yes. I mean, the lot, um, this lot, the, it was one entire piece.
Yes.
It's a piece to the toes in 2021, and, uh, last year, 2022 toes part of the...
Okay. I see, okay. Anybody?
What are the covenants? It says amended Lot 4 is subject to certain restrictive covenants that set forth in instructions entitled Paradise Road Declaration of Restricted Covenant.
But we can't consider restrictive covenants. Planning Board can't consider covenants.
The only thing the planning board can look at in the covenants is if there's a road association.
Well, you at least want to know what they are, I mean, I would think. There isn't such a...
Well, you usually, I'm sure you can't subdivide a lot by the covenants, because that's a pretty standard one. You can't cut one, but usually it's okay if you wanna add, you know, combine, like, we, we do that frequently, we'll combine lots. It's sort of the same idea here, except that lot, the club lot, is not a part of the subdivision.
Well, but we're bringing it in too, so...
Right, right.
So, we're saying a problem with, with Rusty, you get a lot that's being added, though...
They weren't in...
They weren't, crashed that.
And, um, so a determination, if I'm understanding this right, has been made that this... Why does this have to be brought into the subdivision? I mean, on some level, they own both pieces of property, right?
Due to setbacks, it doesn't, you have to, even if you own both lots, you have to have the setbacks, is what I was told by the...
The other problem here, Laurie, I think, please, Mr. Farrar, correct me if I'm wrong, is that this would be a landlocked parcel, unless you came at it on Vernon Street. So the only way, right, and they couldn't create that unless it was added to this. Am I, is that correct? This was already in a system.
It was convened to, uh, so that's the same lot that they, the same first lot that's received the...
Okay.
So they might add that to Lot 4, Paradise Ridge.
I think she owned quite a bit more land than this, than this piece of it.
I guess...
It's around three acres, but, isn't it?
And with the addition going over into the other lot, I think you kind of have to join them, don't you?
I think it is.
There's problems about these, uh...
Right. It'd be really difficult.
Because you can't do anything with that lot, because there's no way to get to it.
Twenty...
So the only way to make it legal is to get to it from this lot and combine the lots. So we're proposing, I mean, this is, this has access, you know, because it's jointly owned. And you're saying they think it's in their best interest long-term to bring it into the subdivision, so that the clarity of, uh, of, of, why...
No, I don't think that, I don't think that's right. What you just said, even if you own two lots, adjacent to each other, you still have to maintain your 10-foot...
You need the setback.
The setback. So what they want to do is to bring that in and make that one deed.
But also for taxing purposes, I mean, I don't, typically, a lot of type people combine lots because of taxing purposes, so why would they not want to combine their lot for tax purposes? I mean, how do you tax, like, five feet of an addition?
My point is, is that the land, subdivision or not, is owned by one party.
But they've got, they've got, they've got a setback on that one Lot 4.
On this side.
So in other words, they can't build the, their structure that they want to, because of the 10-foot rule. But if they combine that lot, that 10-foot rule goes away.
Right, right.
Because now, if they record it as one piece of property, it's one piece of... And that would have to, that would, that new piece would, would be part of subdivision, it has to conform to all the subdivisions.
Yes, yeah.
They should, they should register a deed to incorporate whatever that is in Lot 4.
I'm sure that's what Mr. Farrar is doing.
That's why you have plans, if you have decided, and then he would take it to the registry.
Yeah, so anything with a subdivision that changes within a subdivision has to go through the plan. It doesn't seem like it should have to, right?
This was my...
Well, because it's a subdivision. Right. So that can be... That's what I was thinking about, I'm thinking, okay, alright, um...
So what do we need from...
We need...
Do we need to get your finding?
I gotta see what...
Yeah, I think we do, because there's stuff in it that's being done.
This is being heard under subdivision.
And, and, butters, butters have already had...
We have modified findings of fact. No?
What did you...
I know a couple of them.
Oh, I thought you just...
No, I was talking about not, somebody a little further down up on that ridge was having a lot of water problems from a big clearing, and so I was just going in to see if they were gonna be doing the same thing.
So do you want to go right to the findings of fact? We have a modified findings. Can everybody take a look at page one? I, I wanna ask Courtney, is there something just slightly off about the project description? When I read it, I was like, did the word get left out, or a thought?
No, it's hard to describe.
Okay.
I think I sat and thought about how to explain it, because it's...
It's pulling a lot.
I mean, if you want to change it, by all means...
Not located in the subdivision, then?
It is not, because I can't say they want to add map and lot, because it's not the full map and lot, it's a portion of that map and lot.
I just found it...
It is weird and funny, I sat there, if you guys can come up with a better way, by all means, we can change that.
How we can say that applicant is proposing to combine a portion. Map 26, lot 74, that is not located in a subdivision, within a subdivision, to map 26. Yeah, okay, now, when I'm reading it now on... And I think the assessors will re-tag, relabel that lot when it's combined down the road. Okay, so anyone look at page one?
What's, did he talk about?
Well, I... Well, I'm just, the, the reason on number four, I thought is slightly maybe not the best way to say that, because they actually are going, there's gonna be an addition, so it...
But erosion control would come under site plan.
So I'd... But I'm just thinking...
Maybe from road development, no roads are being developed, no...
I think it would be better myself to say no, um... Because we are talking about that, that this is being done for an addition, so I just don't know how to...
They do anything, the only thing they're gonna do is take part of the summer for an addition.
Yeah, no substantial development as well.
Or just say, just say develop, the only development is, because I agree with you. Let me say only development...
Only residential?
Is for the addition...
Of a modest addition or something, because that's a pretty big structure there.
For like, only residential, or only, I don't...
To an existing structure.
If they do anything else back there, or they move more than that, they're gonna have to come back.
Minimal addition to an existing...
Residence.
They, it's a law, the whole entire thing.
Only a minimal addition to an existing residence. No substantial site work.
No, because it's just a lot, it's like, we don't handle residential stuff. So, right, we, they can build a monster house with that. Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, page two. Everybody good with page two? Page three.
I think that, from the point, we just make on the note, that... Harvesting is...
It's liquidation, but it does...
A complete...
Yeah. I'm just thinking on the reason, I, I agree on the, in a...
Maybe it just needs to say no liquidation harvesting being proposed.
Yeah, that word.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Well, if the town's gonna be in town, it's not in conjunction with the provision, you know, like, to just because of land on the left.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, it's not...
Okay, how about page four?
Fine.
Is ground work different than taking them...
No. How about page five? I would make a motion to approve the finding, the finding of fact.
Sorry?
On favor? And I would want to make a motion to approve the amended Paradise Ridge subdivision, plan for Lot 4. All in favor? Alright, what one do we want to sign?
How many copies do you want them to sign?
How many do you get?
You get one, okay.
All three of these can be signed.
All three, okay.
Yeah.
It seems like, it seems like, yeah.
We've had these kinds of dreams before, but when this Kevin reminded us that they're gonna get filled, always be like this, so... It's true, I mean, this is coming early.
I don't know, if I'm good, if I'm three days in Florida, more heaven waiting.
It's getting hard in here.
Sure, our tree is shooting out of the ground.
Gosh. I know, we're all gonna be wearing sunglasses in our house.
We're not gonna be able to get any mowed, it's gonna be so deep.
This is coming, oh, can I sign this one?
No.
That's what it's not. Let's double check all these. Everybody want to go in both ways at the same time?
There you are, you're welcome. Thank you. Uh, if you want us to, we can. Yeah, I will hold it and I will put it in there. Oh, is that your folder?
We're standing on both of them, correct?
Yeah.
Just to be safe.
And we're gonna use the, who would get the findings of fact, the one for the twenty-second, right, instead of the fourteen? Uh, because I think I changed the description.
Yes.
Is this for, are you doing Stewart?
Yeah, John's first.
I have to move.
Go back, it's. So are you sure we get the right ones?
Does the one that has the bullish under the product description?
No.
Yeah, that's the one we're working from?
Yeah. Okay.
They did the twenty-third, I mean the.
Well, they're rotated the same day, where they have.
She's doing too much. We'll start with John's. Yeah.
I have something to read in the record.
Okay, all right. Um, we're. So we've done the site walk, there's not a lot of butters for me to explain this to, but we've, we've done the site walk. It's been to a meeting, then we did a site walk, so I think we're ready now to go to the findings of fact, but we have something to read into the record.
Yes, um, this is for both properties, because they use the same driveway, um, it is the driveway entrance permit. I do have copies if everybody wants to see it, it does say, state that they're allowed ninety-nine trips per hour during, or during heat hour, I guess, because of the.
I guess I don't have to ask, is that for each business, so is it like two hundred?
It, it goes by the, yeah, no, it goes by the, by the entrance, not by, so they can have fifty properties in there. Or commercial businesses, and they still only get one.
Okay, good.
So do you want copies?
I don't care, because.
No, I think I'm good.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we read the M D O T driveway entrance permit into the right third, second.
All favor? Um, can we also get a motion for the complete application?
I'll make a motion that the application is complete.
Can I give a second?
Sorry.
All favor? So I think we're writing, we're going right to the findings of fact.
Which one are we going with?
Um, John Stewart, the shed thing.
The shed in the office, correct?
The shed in the office, yeah. Okay.
John, do you have a copy of this, or, I, is it there, do you want a copy?
All right, so.
Can I just ask a clarifying question if you're.
Of course.
The bottle donations are gonna be placed where, in which of the?
The, the bottle donations are placed in my trailer, you don't even see the bottles really, there's, when we collect the bottles, they go into a, into my trailer, so.
That's not the little thing, the little.
Yeah, that says can for cancer.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's stored, their cans are stored in that.
Can you open that?
Yes, ma'am.
And just put it in, it's not locked up?
It's got a door on the side, yeah.
Awesome.
I think it should say to receive bottle donations for their nonprofit.
Well, I mean, the only thing is, is I don't necessarily want my place to be a bottle and can drop off, necessarily, so, I mean, we use it, we use, we collect cans around the town.
Yes, I understand what you're saying, but I mean.
You don't want people to go to.
I don't want people coming and just throwing cans on the ground and taking off, I want them to know that that, that trailer, if it's there, they can put their cans in there, and that's what we've communicated to everybody, that's what the shed represents.
I just think it should just say in the description, receive bottle donations for their nonprofit in a trailer located on the side.
Enclosed trailer.
Enclosed.
Wait, wait a minute, what? I, I hear two different things, you're, you're saying that people are gonna come in and put donations of bottles in his trailer on site. What I think he's saying is that he uses that trailer to go around the town to pick bottles up, he just stores the trailer.
No, not necessarily, Bob, what I do is, that trailer, and I, maybe I miscommunicated it to you, um, the trailer does stay on the premises, I go around with my truck. And I pick up cans and bottles from like the sugar shack, the movie theater. And then I go back to my trailer and I stuff them in that, in that, in that trailer.
But you have also said that you didn't want people coming in and just depositing.
I just don't want people to think it's a redemption center, that's, I don't want you to, that labeled as a redemption center, it's not a redemption center.
It's the one that says for their nonprofit. I think that's a good, that's a good correction.
You know what, piles of bottles outside of the trailer.
I don't want, yes, and I don't want to be looked at as it's gonna be, I mean, I keep, we keep a, we, we manage almost two thousand dollars a month in bottles and cans. So we keep a very clean, uh, you know, clean business, I don't want it being communicated, oh, there's the bottle and can redemption center, we go over there and just, you know, chuck our cans and bottles over there. No, it's just, it's a collection location, that's what it is.
Because that trailer is not there to receive donations from the public, it's, it's a situation that he takes that trailer and goes, or leaves it there and goes around and gets stuff and puts in it.
No, no, no.
That's not correct.
He uses a truck to do that.
Well, whatever, it's still there, but you don't want people on your property putting stuff in it.
Well, I mean, that's, that's what we, you know, we've, I, typically, that's what we do, we have it on, I mean, it's there, it's.
Well, you just, you stated that earlier, that you didn't want people coming in and putting stuff on it.
Well, no, I just don't want my place being, in the planning board, I don't want my place being considered a redemption center. It is a, it is a bottle and can drop off location, but it's not a redemption center, we are a collection for childhood cancer, all those cans go to our nonprofit, that's all it is intended for.
I would think that trailer would be sitting there just for advertisement only, you know.
No, I, I fill it all the way full, and then I take it to Ralph's and unload it, and then I bring it back and fill it back up again.
Well, on some level.
And sometimes I can get the black one full, and if that's a good month, we really have a good time.
Wow. So, would it be okay with the group if it said, receive bottle donations for their nonprofit in a trailer cited on the property?
I put enclosed, I wrote that enclosed trailer.
Thank you.
Housekeeping, sorry, it was just.
Yeah, and we may want to say enclosed trailer or enclosed bin, because at some point, we may, you know, we're looking at having nice. Collection bins made, like the one that's at the sugar shack, to help minimize, you know, a lot of the cans and bottles that are around.
Whatever you want, whatever you put here, don't, don't restrict his activities for the future. Because, like he said, he may want to change that trailer out for.
Enclosed trailer all up in.
Oh, yeah. Enclosed.
Trailer orbit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we, you guys did have me add it to the conditions of approval, that no bottles will be disposed from public.
And I still think that needs to stay there.
Yeah.
Very good.
I do, I mean, what it's worth, it's really, what I understand about, about John is that he's a meat freak, so I'm not. I, I think it'll stay, it'll look good. Okay, so anything else on page one? Oh, we on page two? Guys have got grass in it. Um, oh, we have, number eight has not been filled in yet, so. Aesthetics, cultural, and natural values will not have an undue adverse effect, um, that, not, 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 uses project will not affect any historic site, wildlife habitat, or shoreline views. Should have existing garage, a white Delaware wide will be installed, and nine, you agree? Do you don't want, you don't, I, I don't want to say nine.
No, and that's.
Yeah, originally, nine was told, and then they went from nine to maybe twelve, so.
I would just.
I don't want to put a number in there.
So just put pre-made sheds?
Yes, that's correct, I, I mean, that's what I would request.
Okay. That's it?
Well, that site wipe's helped a lot, I think.
I'm sorry, I called John. I did, uh.
It does help.
Just make a footprint skate plan, as Paddy said, you're looking online, literally also did was put what we had talked about, that eventually you're gonna put grass back here, and it's gonna be crushed gravel, and that's gonna be open field.
Yes, wait, wait, we're gonna double wipe, and probably make sure, in reference to that, oh, yes, right on.
Actually, I know we're on a time crunch, so I just, I believe I won't look this up.
Courtney, the parking spots required has been looked at in terms of the resource center and office space concept.
Uh, it goes by square footage.
Okay.
So it's all retail office and something else is in that retail office, and.
Yeah.
Service is all the same.
You've got dumpster cones, good. All right, well, I, I'm still on page three.
Yeah, me too.
So down to ten, financial technical capacity is minimal.
Yes, for waiver, that's on the front.
Okay, so do you want to say, um.
Waiver requested.
Uh, waiver requested.
Yeah, is it waiver requested for financial, or is that because of the storm warning management plan?
We did financial and stormwater, because it's all been.
On both?
It's all done.
So do you want, what's your pleasure on filling in number ten? Met? Um, because we have to really refer us back to the conditions of approval.
I have the idea that it's like, it says all work has been completed, and here we are approving a project, you know what I mean, it's like, okay, you give me, gives me E B G Bs there, and. I would just say met, waiver granted, because.
So take out everything else, and just put waiver granted?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, we go to page four. Stormwater, number sixteen.
Waiver requested that this material is given managed to the site, that it has open space. And we have some statement somewhere else to exactly what he's doing.
Yes, we do, okay, um, we do, we did get something. Oh, no, that was from Davey's project.
No, we did a landscape for John, just showing where grass would be crushed gravel and then the whole backfield.
But he's not adding any pages.
But on that plan, does it show, there's, there was all that stumpage at the back, and you said that would be buried or?
I'm gonna keep it wind road for now, as long as I can, I mean, I really don't have to move it, do I?
It's pretty, in my opinion.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of ugly things around here, I could leave it.
Well, yes.
There's nothing in the law, it's just.
Yeah, yeah.
No, but I'm just gonna go for everything, you know, we have made, we have requested cleanup of other sites that have been done on their site plan. The U, I remember, are, uh, of the facility out on route two, um.
I would, I would consider, you know, right up on the road something, I wouldn't be piling stumps upon them, ain't high blade, I mean, that's two acres back there.
I understand that. So, I think when we were out there, you said you, you intended at some point to get them out of there.
Well, I mean, right now, right now, I'm gonna keep them wind road until the finances, I can get them out of there, yeah, at some point, I'm gonna slowly move them, or bury them, or something that I can do. Or I can't get contractors, for one, and I can't afford to get them, and that's the best thing I can do right now, is, is the wind road along the side of my property, still on, that setback even, away from Mr. Lowell's property. And, uh, so, I mean, at some point, maybe as I'm doing more dirt work and stuff like that, I may dig a big hole, bury them, and take some of that good builder, use it, so.
Jim?
Gravel was, it is gonna get paved.
Part of it, yeah.
Part of it is gonna get paved on the shared.
On the easement piece?
On the easement piece. And then, I mean, just, just so everything's upfront, there was gravel, six inch riprap brought in. Um, where the shed is on the last side, but yeah, eventually, his plan is to, when, when contractors want to go do something, yeah.
You're gonna do, you're gonna do a phase two.
Yes.
That's where all the stumpage is.
That's where everything in the back will hopefully can start to, you know, develop the back is in phase two.
So instead of no new impervious material is being added, should it be minimal?
Yeah, maybe, because the easement's on his land, and that'll be paved.
So under storm, you wanna, we're requesting that minimal, you're saying, for this.
So just on the pavement on his side, I wouldn't do that easement, and that's to get the truck in for Dave. Okay, we go to page four? Page five?
Uh, so do you want me to have that?
Yes, sorry.
All right, there you go.
Um, five. Okay, page six? Okay, additional improvements. Yeah, I mean, it's. That would be what the side, we'd ask you to put in the sidewalk.
I wonder what's not applicable.
That's what I, yeah.
Yeah. I was just explaining to him what kind of a thing that would be.
You could put a stuff, um, they start up at Davis Park and bring it all the way down.
Yes, I think they'd ask you to do it.
I feel like a tunnel would be.
A tunnel.
With a big bridge that goes over.
That's right.
Isn't there already a trail on your, on the Tulsa side?
There is, there's a bunch of trails out there, I don't.
I don't think we've seen the landscaping, the little schematicing, okay.
Yeah, it was in the paper.
Okay.
So anyway, are we good on page six? Okay. How about, is everyone good with page seven? Lighting is on there, on the garage, right?
Yes.
Are you gonna have lighting on the white building?
Yes, there's, there's lighting on it as well.
Page, oh, nine, well, we already discussed these, well, we discussed stormwater, financial capacity. Now, and we have no bottle donations will be visible from public way.
You know, number twenty-two. If you use that as a resource center open to the public.
If we over three thousand square feet, so it'll never be in this domain. Not unless they add an addition on that.
Okay, gotcha.
Then you have some, that's what it's like.
Yeah, good point. I only know because I had to look into it for. Fire out her shoulders and a permit.
She's memorized, like, oh, she's impressive, getting there. Dropping herself up there.
Yeah.
Randy just sends me links.
Oh, yeah, it is a big question here, alright.
You know, you still have a, an exhibit that shows nine in total on the sheds, do you realize that?
Yeah, I think we've, we've discussed just taking that off of that.
Offered it, uh, off the exhibit?
Yep, taking the nine off of there, yep, yes.
Are you planning any signage? I know we don't deal with that, but I'm just asking a general question.
Yeah, me and Dave are working together right now to make sure our signs kinda match, yep.
Do you use that existing? I think it's all gonna be on that stick, that elevated stand.
So, would anyone like to make a motion?
I don't like a motion. They're listed on the, um, they're listed in the first page.
We kind of addressed them through it.
In the motion, you could put the providing fact with.
The request. I will make a motion to approve being drafted, findings of fact. As amended, because we did amend something on the bottle donation section. Noting that there, with the approval of the requested waivers for stormwater and financial capacity. So I'll make that one.
Okay, do I have a second? I'll second, all in favor.
And we have to approve the site plan?
Uh, if you have this signed, I would say, actually give you this one, it doesn't have the nine on it, I removed it and you just sign.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
John, we're done with you.
Alright, thank you.
Well, I mean, if you want, you can wait while they.
Well, I'm gonna.
Cause you could walk out and be like, mm, kidding.
Thank you much.
Thanks, John. Good luck.
Alright.
I am so hot.
I mean, the problem is before we turn on the AC, we can't hear anything.
Yeah, it doesn't work.
What doesn't work?
Turn the AC on, you can't have, you can't have a conversation.
I opened that window all the way.
You know, there is those grants that you can get about like, what was it that we did, this, the? This one is this? Yeah, they should be.
Oh, it's Joey's.
Close nice.
I like that.
Going back to its proper owner.
Yes.
Then we could have.
And maybe do something else at least for you and then.
Oh, right.
Everybody ready? Does anyone need? Does anyone need a break? Okay, Dave. So here we go. This is our last one. Oh, okay, let me check the right one. We've already done standing.
It is, um, a signed letter, originally David signed it for Ron, because Ron was unavailable, but then Ron was able to sign it today. That discusses the elements of parking area and the grading. Actually, that might have been in your packets, but it didn't have Ron's signature, this has Ron's signature.
There's all the, um, the contingency, uh, pre-paving.
Yeah, that was good.
And I did, actually keyed it in, the numbers to the map. You could see, I mean, well, you know where it is, cause you came on the, well, suited for everybody else.
I do remember that parking lot being pretty bad. I'd forgotten about that.
It works with the rain.
Oh, wow.
It's gonna be really bad next week.
So how do I know which one?
So the newest one, this is.
I think I. Oh, okay, six twenty-two. Did you have to six twenty-two?
Was it something I did? Hey, I was under a nine crunch, okay, do you know how stressful it was?
Are they sitting there, you're making fun of Cory?
No, Bob wanted to know if they were paving the two apartments. Why did I say two apartments?
I, I, I don't know.
I think it was supposed to say.
Parking for the two apartments, probably.
I'm sorry.
You read your last, your last sentence.
It's fine, if I'm not out, then you guys could all do your own paperwork.
I don't think it's a bad idea though, with Jack dealing with tenants.
I'm sorry. Am I reading this right?
Yes, it does read.
Well, you know, it was a stressful day, alright?
I think every day here is probably stressful.
Well, you know, I've had three meetings in a sidewalk in the last week, so.
Uh, John? Stuart, he said his property was on town water and this has a well?
This one isn't, the other one, the other one isn't on town water yet, they're going to be hooked up to it, but that one already, because. The garage didn't have a septic because they didn't have a bathroom. But now with the double wide, they'll have a bathroom, so they have the option to be hooked up, because water goes to the school.
School, yeah.
Water goes to school and the sewer does.
But the sewer can't, cause of something with the pressure or something.
Well, no, they have to, they can't pump, they have to pump uphill to go downhill to the school to come back.
Yeah, for sure.
And the water district, the sewer district said no.
Good, so do you both have that written in the record, please?
Yes, can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion that we read the letter signed by Ron into the record.
Second.
All in favor? Great. So I think we, um, would someone like to make a motion that the application is complete?
Motion applications complete.
All in favor? If I can read right to the parts of that.
Apparently the description needs to be changed. It's a second, we see one word.
I don't think you should change it.
Well, I don't see how they're gonna pay, just like the floor up there, don't you doubt it, that's how they pay.
It's the parking.
You can do anything with money.
Housing decides change every day, Bob, maybe it's a new thing.
If you get hit pick on once in a while, it's not even worth it.
Alright, so what would you like me to add?
Well, as well as parking for.
Second.
I can't see it, I would, I would suggest.
What did you teach for your whole career?
As well as parking.
But if I can't see it, I have no idea.
No, I don't think though, are you paving where the parking is for the apartments?
On the outside of buildings?
No, it's gonna be gravel.
So, so the current gravel parking lot will be paved, period.
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 Yep.
And you're trying to reflect the fact that the two existing.
Well, well.
You're trying to reflect that the two existing apartments will be continuing use.
When you look at the four item thing, it has it as like a separate sentence, so it's, it's. I think it, it's either item three or item four that Ron signed, saying that there's gravel parking on the.
Yeah, at the west end, the parking lot will be gravel, and that will be with this.
You just gotta be careful how that reads, because if you say. The current gravel parking lot will be paved, that gets everything paved.
Minus the west side of the building.
Minus the west side of the building.
Well, west side of the building's not currently being a, it's, that's not a parking lot, I know.
Yeah, oh, I thought it was gravel over there.
It is, but it doesn't, that's not part of the parking lot. Yeah.
Well, which, you mean where the, where the.
Minus apartment use parking. Maybe that's what I was trying to put there.
There you go, that's perfect.
And my words just got jumbled out. So, so the current gravel parking lot will be paved minus apartment.
Parking.
Use.
There we go.
Should it say definitively in a sentence, existing park, apartments will remain in use? Existing, two existing apartments will remain in use, in other words, you're trying to describe the overall use of this property. And now that we've broken up the parking sentence, I think you should just definitively say the apartments will.
Uh, so, two second floor apartments.
Will remain in use.
Or rental.
For rental.
Rental units, so.
Two first second floor.
Rental units will remain in use.
Okay. Perfect.
You good with paint one, Bob?
Oh, yeah. Now, this erosion control doesn't reference, um, the letter from Ron. Is that where you would put it or in stormwater? Well, we can't over note it, maybe we could put that in there.
I can, uh, reference letter in packet, do you want me to do that? Reference grade, heading up to grade one.
Well, because the, 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 it is sort of very little, but.
Cause I got.
Between the two buildings, between that building and the garage, it's gonna end up getting pretty submit for erosion going into the garage. I mean, that's gonna end up coming down.
So do you want me to take that out and just put, there'll be pavement added?
It's stated, Jim, in that, I think it's, that's the third point, that it's gonna, that it gets directed to the back of the property now towards the building.
So do you want me to take up a first sentence and just leave it as, there will be pavement added, but will utilize, dot, 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 continue what I've got? And then at the end, put, um, reference packet, letter, grading of concern, and, yeah, okay, that sounds great.
Or you could just say, or you could, with the grade of parking will be addressed. To a wood runoff, but that's fine, we, I don't think you need to change that.
We're gonna take care of it.
Yeah, it's just how it's worded on, yes. So that it doesn't conflict where it's worded someplace else.
We try to think of, I think I mentioned this at the sidewalk, it sounds tedious, but it's not, it's not for now, it's like in ten, twenty years when all of us aren't doing this anymore. And they're looking at the record.
Oh, you still.
And it's.
Cause we've run into that.
Yeah, yeah, cause we.
Just trying to make it easy.
There's been times we've pulled up stuff and gone.
I would say the phrase that's key is that the water's being directed towards the back of the property, not towards.
Another one's other side.
Yeah. So it just, just.
If it's, if the water's directed towards the back of the property, anyone can figure out that that's different than going into.
You would think so.
But that's what grading is about, I mean, we're, we're grading the property to get it all right, and that's why you're grading to get our water and erosion control. So it's all kind of redundant, yeah.
The tricky part is that, that the elevation of the, of John's lap is, um, easily a foot lower than the elevation of that end of our building.
Okay, on number five on traffic, should we reference M D O T approval?
You may want to, I didn't have it at this time, that part would be.
Yeah. Yeah, where is page two? Page two, number five, under traffic, it's met, but now we have the M D O T approvals that we'll add in.
Five, so will not cause existing business location, um, D O T approval number, D O T permit.
Oh, you put the permit number right in there, right?
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
I'll reference it when I'm ready in my final.
Is this septic? And, okay, is everybody good with page two? How about page three?
Well, top of page three, which is the continuation of parking, it says. Two parts, we need a total of seventeen spaces, building has seventeen marked out spots, so you're preparing to line off all parking spaces, or not?
I am, I am.
You want me to do it, I'll do it, it'll be easier if no one's just paved.
Yes, right, exactly, okay, cause when I see marked out spots, I'm.
Every other day, I have a work campaign.
I'll just use chalk.
I want you to do it in the winter too on the ice, please.
The kid comes and does his donors out there, you gotta put the gravel back in there and put it.
Okay, we get, we get trash.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have a parking attendant though in the beginning, cause I think people are gonna be really confused.
I think that's a good idea, no, you wanna set up a pattern, you know, and then they move on to what happened there.
Where's the, do we have a drawing with the dumpster location?
Uh-oh.
That got put on there, we can add it on there.
Cause it's saying it's gonna.
Directly behind the, um, the corner where we're adding the cooler freezer, it's like, it's right behind that.
Okay.
But, so there's no way, there's no possible way you could see it from the street.
Okay.
Can you, Dave, can you come show, Dave, can you come show me where, just so I can put it on here?
Absolutely.
So how is D and E gonna get back there to get that?
Um, because we're gonna have, like, we'll, we'll probably do gravel going down to the garage, and it's like right, like, go to the garage, you know what I mean, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I know what I, they're gonna have gravel that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so where will the dumpster be, who's gonna walk in, is it gonna be back here?
Here, here, one is garbage, one is recycling, and then.
Don't mark that too bad, they have to.
I gotta clean it here.
I'm just gonna put a nice little mark there and I'm just gonna write dumpsters. Can I see yours, John? I just wanna put it on there. That's perfect, I'm just gonna write dumpsters and put it there.
Yes, please.
Versus a loading.
On dumpsters.
I looked it up.
Yeah, yeah, she just asked.
Cause I thought it was a dock, I didn't know the difference either.
Yeah.
A dock. A berth and a dock, I didn't know what a berth was, I know what a loading dock is.
So berth is.
It's usually an elevator, dock is elevator.
A dock is elevated and a berth is, is.
Just a spot tart.
Is it, is that impression?
Nope, it is just a spot that they can back around, it's not a.
We've all learned something today.
Yeah.
I even had it in my book, but I think it turns out, I figured somebody would ask it, I thought I needed, and it was kind of disappointing.
Here we are.
Thank you. She wanted to show us.
Where is that?
That's number six on page three, Jimmy.
Yeah. Okay, so is everybody good with page three?
Now that I know that difference.
Yeah, yeah. Everybody had their phones out? It was packed, the word of butter. Messed everybody up? Okay, so. Stormwater, number sixteen.
Um, we have a letter.
Oh, I do have it actually. A loading berth, any commercial building of an area of five thousand square feet or more shall have a minimum of one off-street loading berth, twelve feet by fifty feet by fourteen feet. A loading berth means a space within the main building or on the same lot, provided for the standing, loading or unloading of trucks, having a minimum dimension of twelve feet by thirty-five feet and a vertical clearance of at least fourteen feet. Wow, there's some specific information there. So the first section I read was our, def, our code, and the other one was the state's definition of a loading berth.
Okay, stormwater, we'll provide, number sixteen has not been.
There's no waiver requested, so that he, um, met, letter provided by excavation contractor denoting. How, um.
Stormwater.
Stormwater runoff will be dealt with.
Yeah. Okay, page five. Now, under, um. page five, where it says conformance with other laws, you talk about currently obtaining plenty of approval, will not need D, D approval, but you are getting fire, you don't need fire marshal's approval.
They do. He's in the process of that.
Okay, could we add them, or is that somewhere else?
It might be on conditions of approval. Officer Kent will obtain a state fire marshal's permit and will submit to the planning office prior to the building opening.
It's about three weeks out, but as soon as I get enough given to you, you guys will all have it.
Okay, onto page six. Number thirteen, how many did you?
Page twelve, do you wanna, do you wanna reference the DOT permit there?
Uh, that just discusses if it, O twelve A.
I don't know if it's correct to say traffic flow will not change from the current plan, because how the building is used.
Yeah.
I, I would take that out.
I think we should reference MDOT. Additional improvements, number thirteen, again. No bridge, no sidewalks, no gutters.
No tunnel.
I'd like a bridge over the Calstar.
Oh, a tunnel would be more fun.
No, not with teenagers.
That's true.
Have to be an awful tall bridge.
I, I asked DOT if they would, like, can you do a crosswalk, and they're like, no, not one, the speed limit's fifty miles an hour. It has to be like forty or less.
That's funny.
I just said we're gonna have, we're gonna have a bunch of volunteers coming over, and Mark was saying that they have some time, a couple mornings a week, first thing in the morning.
You know, like, crosswalk, or the crossing guards, why can't you just have an adult always go over back and forth with them and have one of those crossing stop signs, you know?
Because you can't do, you can't do a crosswalk.
But another crosswalk, like, you know, just the sign I'm saying, just so when someone's flying down the road.
You really think that they're gonna pay attention?
Yeah, I don't think anyone's gonna slow down, especially the trucks.
They don't slow down during, during with the cops sitting there during school hours.
How do we handle thirteen? Did we say not applicable?
Thirteen was, uh.
I think it is non-requested report.
Okay. Archaeological destroy it. Okay, page seven. Lawn around building will be kept mowed.
I don't think, I don't think we need to have that. That's common sense.
No, Laurie don't like it there.
It's not, it's not been common sense.
Except for me.
I mean, we don't, we haven't told any other business company, oh, by the way, you.
We have, we have.
I heard you say that, that we had to plant flowers.
No, we said we wanted you to clean up your existing landscaping.
All right, I heard that as flowers, but.
Is this because you're a guy?
And we have told other site planer crews that they have not been keeping up with their landscaping plan, which was a strip of grass and plantings, and they give them out and have to mow them.
Who was this?
That's a good question.
I, I would rather, uh, tell you off.
Yeah, okay, so. Yeah, I always forget that.
I understand.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that at all.
Do you guys wanna vote if I should just keep it or take it out?
I, 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 no, I think it's important.
I think it should be taken out.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm gonna lose on this.
Lawn around building will be kept mowed. All right. Do you want to take it out?
I don't, because we have to.
Okay, who wants the, who wants the lawn mowed? Actually, I do, too.
Great, okay, who doesn't? I think it's something we should start doing, actually. Who doesn't wanna?
Jim and Jim and Julia.
Okay, well, so now I have a tie, so doesn't that?
So it fails by law.
So I'm taking it out. I think we need to start seeing that on a lot of applications.
It's not the final.
How about this?
Job to tell somebody to kind of mow it.
It says, existing landscaping will be tended to, which would insinuate you need to keep a lawn mowed.
Yes, will, will be maintained.
Existing landscaping will be maintained.
Will be cleaned up and maintained going forward.
Yeah, but I love rygweed, so I'm gonna plant some rygweed out there. It's not, it's not dirty. Laurie, it hasn't been, it hasn't been mowed, because it hasn't, it's been vacant.
No, but I mean, I'm talking about the fact that they're gonna move in, run a great facility, and we want that great facility to look like it is cared for. And he is proposing in his landscaping plan that he's going to have lawn, so lawn needs to be maintained.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's a meadow.
Oh, I, I agree. I mean, personally, I, I, I think there's a bigger issue with the, with the shrubs out on the roadside, but.
Well, we're saying all the key.
I mean, it hasn't been maintained, because nobody's been there for.
Well, it is going to be cleaned up and will be maintained, is what I thought the sentence should say.
They've got, it's beautiful landscape, though.
It is.
It used to be, anyway, and I think it'll be beautiful again.
Did the Yaskos ever really, I never really noticed.
They never know. They did it once for a while, but, I mean, nobody really paid.
Right, it wasn't, it wasn't a big, a priority for them, but.
Well, of course, you know, regardless of what you write in there, we will do all of that. And I, I give you my word to that. It's just, it's a little bit lower priority than getting both halves of the nonprofit moved in.
Right.
I mean, you have, um. A significant number of months to complete all of this work, so no one's saying gate one, everything.
You have to start it in two years and complete it in three, so.
I heard in two years, we can do it in less than a year.
You've got time.
So just mow the lawn by twenty twenty-six, and you're done.
So can that sentence say existing landscaping will be cleaned up?
Well, it says tended to.
Okay.
Tended and utilized, that's fine.
And maintained.
Instead of utilized.
Yeah, utilized is kind of.
Maintain is better. Utilized, hey, you. Tended and maintained.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, I got a nice ramp.
That's right.
We can do rollers.
Uh, eighteen, nineteen, parking, net.
Where, where is this six, do you wanna name it?
Because we already referenced the parking in standard D one A.
And in C. It says second floor will be included in the parking review in the site plan.
D.
Second floor, parking for second floor parks.
No, it's right here on page two. D, commercial establishment.
Second floor will be included.
Well, why don't you?
Just put page two.
Page two, uh.
See standard.
Paragraph, whatever, and then, then and then what you said, because that would, that would get you back here. Yeah, a lot easier than it's worth it, yes. Instead of just standard A.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, page eight, net. Writing is net, we went over the writing. We're waiting on the state fire marshal. It will be a condition of approval. Yeah, that's.
So that should be just that, right?
No, we're still waiting on that.
Well, how do we say that?
Yeah, because we'd never. You can need it, because then, I mean, the condition of approval says they can't do anything, but we have that in the law.
Page nine. Are we all good with the conditions of approval here?
I make a motion that the, uh, conditions of approval are met. I make a motion that conditions of approval are met. That's what I was trying to say.
Do I have a second? We need to have finding of facts.
Yeah, the findings are fact. I'm standing, I'm looking at, reading it, and I'm trying, I'm looking.
You guys are all punchy?
Well, is that, is that accurate? Because we're waiting for the.
As drafted.
We're waiting for the application from the fire marshal. Shouldn't that be included in this motion?
Can, can I say something?
Uh, oh, because it's in the condition, yes.
When I, um, when I talked to the fire marshal who's handling our permit, he said that it's up to you, um, but that, you can, you can complete and approve everything from the planning board without actually having that, knowing that it's, it's gonna come in, and that, um, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and it also says.
We also say you can't occupy the building until they have.
Yeah, it can't be open to the public, yeah.
Can't be open to the public. That's actually, that's in chief's letter.
Yeah.
So. So, all right, so.
So it's really a motion, Jim, of the finding is a fact as drafted of, um.
I recommend.
Conditions.
Does that, the conditions are, are part of.
Yes, with the conditions.
Okay, but that does say quiet.
Yeah, you have to guess, because it's different than.
In Mike's letter.
So finding of facts as drafted and invented, because you did make a couple changes.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Laurie, does that seem confusing?
Wow.
So there's, so to get this straight.
Who's second?
We're not.
Laurie.
Laurie is.
Can we have a vote real quick before the?
All in favor.
So we can't open until we get the fire marshal's permit?
Correct, you can have public there. You can go in and do your construction.
And be prepared. He may, they may have something they want you to do, so.
Can we approve the, I need a motion to approve the site plan.
I make a motion to approve the site plan.
I'll second that.
All in favor.
So I just have to get the, um, state fire marshal's permit to you, and then we're gonna go?
The planning board doesn't need, as long as it's like clears through my office, like one person officer, me, Natalie, then you're good.
Okay, and do I get, like, do I get anything, like a piece of candy, a certificate, or just?
How about? So. Is that what I'm supposed to say?
Nothing.
No.
There is no certificate of occupancy on this plan.
Yes, so you were all set.
But there isn't.
Oh, you're really looking for something formal like that?
I, I will send you a copy of the finding as.
We will sign something?
Yeah, once I find what I did with that.
We're gonna sign it right now.
Are you guys meeting once a week?
Do I just put the dumpster up?
No, we need, because every other week is one for us, and we need, so every Wednesday there's a meeting. You're welcome to come, Dave, to all of us.
We're the second in fourth, just like more than the first and the third.
I heard, I thought Natalie told me that you guys are gonna be meeting more often and get caught up.
We had an extra meeting, or we didn't have an extra meeting, but originally in June, we were only gonna have one. It says, our meeting fell on town meeting night, so that's why we met last week and this week. Typically, I've got two weeks between meetings, and they've got two weeks, but because of the town meeting, it threw everything.
I will get that fire marshal's permit. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you, we're excited. Thank you.
Go forward.
You only want one.
Yeah, because I'm just gonna put it in there.
Do we have anything, just just?
Um, I did give you all copies of Robert's rules of procedure, cheat sheet.
The twelve page cheat sheet.
Page.
Hey, it's eight hundred pages.
I have the, if you'd like it, I have the only copy of the book. Actually, I think Natalie took it out.
I think I'd like to burn it. Right, yeah, that's.
Well, I'll bet your moment to shine, hurry up.
Yep.
That's quite bad, too. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor.
Okay. Yes, uh, let's see. So this is sign, this needs.